It's 10:00 AM on April the 9th, 2014. I hereby call the meeting of the Moongate County Commission to order. I would ask that you please stand for a moment of silent meditation and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Diane.
Today for approval there are exonerations, 36 listings, $37,358.16 for tax year 2013, fiduciary orders as for April 9. This does include the matter that's coming up on Robert Kuncheski estate. We do have also first quarterly reports submitted by Cynthia Stafford for your approval. Minutes of March 12. Vouchers, General County Fund, $111,009.1033, Cole Severance Fund, $8,071.198, Mason Dixon Park, $1,024.79, Justin Ridge Park, $3,0262.40, 911, $3,220.99, Assessor's Valuation Fund, $400, Magistrate Court, $44.94 for total of $1,028.765.43, and there's one revision moving $50,000 into the road fund.
I'd suggest that we withhold the one issue regarding the estate of Robert Kuncheski outside of the motion.
Yes.
Because we may want to make a separate motion on it.
I agree. I would make the motion that we approve it with the exception of the fiduciary order on the Robert Kuncheski estate.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried. Now we have the Robert Kuncheski estate. There's some correspondence involved, and I think we have some people present in regards to this estate.
You identify who they are?
Did you get this?
Yes, I got that.
Do you want to hear comments from them regarding this estate before we...
It might be helpful if anyone identify themselves if they're here for that purpose.
If anyone's here regarding the estate of Robert Kuncheski and you would like to address the commission, please stand, state your name and address. Raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Yes?
Rachel Friend.
Would you stand, please, and state your address as well?
517 Harvard Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia, 26505.
Okay. Do you have a comment that you want to make?
No, but I'm...
No, wait a minute. I'll get to you. But I want to make it sort of a semblance of order here.
Yes, my sister and I are here to... Did you receive the...
Would you...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you state your name and address?
Shunakulcheck, 632 Congress Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia.
Okay.
Our attorney was supposed to fax something.
Yes, we received from Ed Roa.
Yes.
We received that letter.
Okay, that's why we're here.
Did you want to add anything to that? That's what he was asking.
I don't... I mean, if the letter states...
That's fine. You don't have to add anything.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You had a comment, ma'am?
Yeah.
State your name and address, please.
Tamara Kuncheski. I am 461 Congress Avenue, Star City, West Virginia, 26505. I am his... was his caregiver and I am his ex-wife, and I came because I didn't know if I should or not.
Anyone else comment regarding Kuncheski estate?
Okay, I would... There was an objection to the filing. There's also a note here that we were just sent from Jennifer McKinley. She says she wishes to relinquish my duties at the executive estate of Robert J. Kuncheski due to health issues. A family member will be taking over duties. Now, from that short, brief thing, I don't know what family member she can talk about, whether Mr. Kuncheski... Well, I know. Let me finish what I'm saying because it's not totally clear, but it doesn't matter who she wants. It matters who we want. So, Carrie, if you'd help us here, what is the proper motion here? Do we want to deny the appointment of Jennifer McKinley in one motion and then do another motion appointing, I guess... I'm sorry, ma'am. What was... Shauna?
Shunakulcheck.
Kohlscheck. Do we want to do those in two separate motions?
Well, you do, but you have two different issues.
Okay.
Because there was a will presented which we've placed for you to confirm for probate today based that was recorded last week. So you're... And then there was a separate confirmation of the executor who came in and took their oath. So you need a motion to not confirm the will or the appointment of the executor in that case.
One of the things, we do have an objection by Ed Monroe in terms of the witnesses to the will. He's challenging whether one witness actually signed the will or not.
But that's an issue that Circuit Court's going to have to take.
Right, that will go to Circuit Court.
Your motion should be that the will was presented to us and it will be confirmed without probate, meaning it was just recorded. No one will be allowed to come in and take action on it. When we get an order from the Circuit Court as to the validity of the will, then the estate can proceed.
But can we appoint... Well, let me ask this question. Is there any other will that you know of?
Not as of today. We have not found one, but we have...
Okay. So would we be able to go ahead and appoint an administrator?
Well, you're within 30 days. So if you were appointing an administrator, you're not going to confirm the appointment of the will. You can... You can... You really wouldn't be doing anything. If she... If you didn't confirm the appointment of the will, you didn't confirm the executor who came in and took their oath, then that... Then within 30 days, they could have waivers from whoever was listed in that will that one of the other children that was listed in the order could come in and take administration with bond.
Okay.
For the will that exists right now. And then would there be another confirmation that comes before you?
Okay, but the administrator would not be able to do anything because of the will contest?
They would be able to... Well, they're... Right. They wouldn't be able to act on the will because you're not... You wouldn't be probating the will today, but they would still have administration of the estate.
They could protect the estate, but they don't know how to divide it because we don't know whether the will is good or whether it's intestate or...
Well, in that case, then you would want to appoint a curator.
That's why we have you here. You know all the titles.
If you're wanting to appoint someone just to protect the estate, not to be able to handle any other kind of administrative duties on the estate, then you would appoint a curator. Normally, when you appoint a curator, you appoint someone who is an uninterested party in the estate who will protect it, such as the sheriff or...
Well, see, that's what's gotten me concerned, given the volume and already the allegations, I guess is the correct word, misconduct, taking money that shouldn't be taken, all that. And I know it's none of these parties that the allegations are against, but it just concerns me, given the size of the estate, that we should try to appoint someone to protect the estate while the progress goes on. Having seen some other estates that they're selling property, giving stuff away, they're dividing everything up there, and they're still in court. They haven't even got to trial in Circuit Court.
Yeah.
So I guess I would make first... The first motion, not to confirm the executrix as outlined in the will, not to confirm, and that we would await administration till adjudication of the allegations of the inappropriateness of the will is the best word.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
And then I would appoint... And that doesn't prevent you all from going in and becoming administrator, but I would also move that we appoint the sheriff to be a curator, to work with the family, to protect the estate assets from any distribution or waste while all these issues are aired out for the family.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
I'll add one other thing. Now that you've done that, the sheriff would only serve for the curator until such a time as you've indicated that they have... The court, Circuit Court, has determined and made a ruling on the will, and then we would know how to proceed from that point, whether they're going to probate that will or they're going to go with intestate administration.
Yeah. I said that.
Yeah.
It's on...
Thank you, Carrie.
Is that it?
I think that finishes it.
Any comment from anyone concerned with the estate?
No, I was there when the will was signed, but that's okay. Whatever happens, happens.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not in our jurisdiction. It's in Circuit Court.
Okay. Ready to move on?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're done.
You're free to stay and watch the other stuff if you want.
You can be tortured.
You guys are good-looking, but I ain't gonna say...
You get another 5% cut.
Renetta's not here.
Now that you have taken that action, this is what they thought you might do, so you did not confirm Jennifer McKinley in the estate.
Yeah.
That's complete.
Okay. Well, here's another one. Which is... Oh, this is the report.
That's the...
We approved that, right?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Just wondering. Renetta's not here.
She's not, but I do have some things on the...
Do you? Okay.
Have you signed?
No.
Okay. Renetta is attending a grant writing course three days in Fairmont, so on her behalf, I am submitting Governor's Community Partnership Grant Program Request for Project Amendment, and this is for the Rock Board Food Pantry. Do you sign it?
Does it need a motion for...
Approval.
Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
I have a request for reimbursement for the day report center. Total amount of $14,528.1. Needs approval.
Move for approval.
Second. I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
The last item is Governor's Community Partnership Grant Program contract. The resolution was authorized in December, and this is the application that needs approval and signature.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
The last item is Governor's Community Partnership Grant Program contract. The resolution was authorized in December, and this is the application that needs approval and signature.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
This is a $5,000 grant for athletic fields at Clayton South. That's it.
Charlotte Cox, National Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation.
Actually, Diane Dickens, I'm the family advocate of the Child Abuse Center. Charlotte was unable to be here today, so...
Oh, okay. You want to come up here and read the proclamation for us?
We want to make sure we get your good side on TV.
All 29 people are going to watch this.
Whereas in 1983, Congress declared April to be National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and whereas since that time, communities across the country have taken the opportunity to raise awareness of issues surrounding child maltraitment and abuse through proclamations, ceremonies, educational forums, tributes, and candlelight vigils. And whereas April is the time to look back to acknowledge the children who have suffered and the loss sustained throughout our community because of that suffering. And whereas April is also the time to look forward, most of all to a time when children no longer have to live in fear. And whereas tragic acts of violence against children are occurring with increasing frequency throughout the state of West Virginia and the United States. And whereas these acts of senselessness are destroying innocent lives and devastating families and communities. And whereas too many of West Virginia's children have been lost in violent, preventable deaths through guns, fire, automobile accidents, physical violence, and suicide. And whereas in celebration of life, diversity, and hope for the future, the citizens of West Virginia, and specifically Monongalia County, should condemn these acts of violence committed against our children and our communities. And now, therefore, the Monongalia County Commission does hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and encourages all citizens to promote the action necessary to stop all preventable deaths of children. Date is April 9th, 2014.
Move to approve the resolution as read.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
Do you have anyone else with you?
Caleb Benson is our development coordinator.
Aye. Why don't you all come up here? We'll have a picture with you.
Can we just stand behind you?
You stand in front of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, you stand up here. We'll stand up.
Okay, I was going to say, I'm going to block your good side. Wish I luck for our good side.
You know that he has no film on.
No film.
Tell you how old he is. Talk about film.
Hey, he's still looking for the thing to come out.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, your work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Management representation letter. State auditor's office. Diane, do you have that or...
This is a standard letter following the completion of our audit. It was very good this year. I think the only thing that we had was the OPEB item. So if you would please authorize the president to sign the letter.
Move for authorization.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried. It's a long letter.
What's this?
Where do I sign, left or right?
15. Thank you.
Thank you. Appointment to the Building Commission North Central West Virginia Community Action.
Couple weeks ago, we interviewed the only candidate who had applied for the building commission. Richard Jacobs came in. We talked to him. His goal is to have infrastructure catch up with the building in the community. He's been a homeowner and permanent resident since 1989. He's involved in the flooring industry for 16 years, and he would like to be appointed to the county building commission. Do you consider that?
I move that we reappoint the...
Not re...
It's a new appointment.
Or...
Appoint.
All right. Let's start again. What's the name?
Richard Jacobs.
Richard Jacobs. I met him, nice guy. I move we appoint him.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
Term will expire June 30, 2015.
Okay. We got one more?
Yes. The second is Michael Brandmeyer. He has been the commission's representative on the North Central West Virginia Community Action Agency for quite some time. He's currently their president. It's the governing board sets policy. They service Mon, Marion, and Taylor Counties, and he is interested in continuing. His term would expire December 31st, 2015.
I would move we reappoint him to that position.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried. Is that it?
On that same subject, I have posted openings on our website. We have two on the abandoned and dilapidated enforcement agency, two expired terms, both ended January 1st, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. They must be residents in West Run. The Development Authority, we have six three-year terms that are coming up, May 5, so keep in mind if anyone's interested. Planning Commission, we have four three-year terms available as of March 31st. Public Service Districts, one term expired March 31st.
Which public service district?
Cheap View.
Cheap View.
Is one that has one term expired March 31st. River Road, one term will expire April 30, and West Run, we have actually three terms there. So I posted all these on the website.
Okay, good. Is that it?
We had a gentleman stop in the office who had purchased property at a tax fail but lost the tickets. He's asking that we... That the tax office be permitted to issue replacement tickets for number 48848 and 49576.
Did he approach the tax office?
He did. Stay close to take that you have to do that.
Oh, okay.
We give you...
So do you... You need a motion?
You need a motion for that?
Do you charge a bunch of money like the DMV does for your license?
Reissue it?
Actually, no, we are not.
No. The answer's no. It just depends on what level of government you are, as to how much they get to charge you. I would move that we authorize the tax department to reissue the lost ticket.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
And I have a letter from Carrie. This is regarding a new employee. Do you have her with you, Carrie?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to present to you Jessica Strater, who has started with us on Monday and will be working with us in the Monongate County Court's office. Jessica, this is your Monongate County Commission. Would you like the commission to welcome her to Monongate County?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried. Welcome.
Welcome. Are you in relation to Steve Strater?
It's my father-in-law.
Your father-in-law?
Yep.
I went to school with him. I've got stories to tell you about him.
1880s. I didn't know they kept records back then.
Anything else, Diane?
That's it for me.
Okay. Set the meeting date, delay the levy. We have a proposed date of Tuesday, April 15th, at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. What a Memorial Day.
We can't do it on Wednesday?
No, you have to meet on the third Tuesday in April. That is for history.
We're going to make everybody in Charleston come here on Tuesday.
It's Ides of April.
Yes.
It's going to be a tough day that day.
Ides of April. Say anything like Texas?
The Ides of April and Tax Day, and we're going to levy... Lay the levy. Well, I move... We want to come in at 10 o'clock? We've got to have a public hearing. You think we're going to have a big turnout? We never do. I move that we set it for 10 o'clock on Tuesday, April 15th, to lay the levy.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried. Reports from county commissioners. Tom.
Basically, I only have one report. And it's actually, I'm just asking that thoughts and prayers go out. It's very difficult when you know of someone who has cancer, but when your students now are starting to get cancer, it's very concerning. So I just want to wish Ashley the priest, who's going through four weeks of chemotherapy, the best, and hopefully, everything will work out. Thank you.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
I saw something in the paper that I wanted to bring up that I don't think... I don't think is... May not be our jurisdiction, but one thing that is our jurisdiction is public health and safety. And I saw an interesting letter, which I thought something that we ought to spend... At least ask who would be the body to look after that. Someone wrote an article about the slides and the potential slides that, you know, with the weather the way it is, the constant rains, our varied terrain, make us very susceptible to major slides. And the concern... I know we don't have regulations, but when you start looking at some of these buildings being put up all over the place, on hillsides and on pillars and everything, it goes back to my issue about subdivision regulations pushing for them, but I would like, if it's all right with the commissioners, to ask Diane to ask Phil Megrow if he knows of any provision in the code which would allow us to deal with what may perceive as potentially dangerous conditions that would create a slide that create a huge loss of life.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify I'm saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried.
It's just our way of being proactive.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
I have one thing. I've received a couple calls regarding a apartment complex at the beginning of Brookhaven Road. The inadequate storage for garbage, the lack of upkeep on the appearance of the place. There's a concern. And what I'd like to do is, I can't make a motion as president, but I'd like to throw out and entertain a motion that we send the owner of that complex a letter of concern that we cite to him that there's been other complaints previously, and the condition hasn't been corrected. The garbage is exposed, the equipment there is too small to accommodate the garbage. I came by there this morning and it was already overflowing, and I don't think they pick it up till Friday. And actually, it was overflowing yesterday. So there's inadequate garbage bins, and it's exposed to public view when you drive by the place. There's complaints of beer cans hanging from the porch, drinking on the porch in public, and a host of other complaints. But I would just like maybe have Diane draft a letter up for us and send it to the owner of that property and express to him our concern. One of the things we're attempting to do in Monongate County is place emphasis on quality of life, and appearance and sanitation certainly contributes to the quality of life. And ask him that if he won't address the issues and take preventive action. Surely, there's a person that resides there that he could get the police up around the place on a daily basis, whatever he would deem appropriate. But we'd like to have his cooperation in correcting that area.
I would make that motion and as deemed appropriate, working with Janby, I would suggest you also include any applicable statutes or references to statutes that may apply, just so he's aware of what we think. We would like his cooperation, but something has to be done. We can't allow that condition to continue.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I just don't know if you know, but they had the 10 most, best cities to live in West Virginia, and two of them were in our county, one was Morgantown, the other was Brookhaven.
Brookhaven.
So, those were, I thought that was ironic that you brought that up.
They must've come in on the other end.
That's because they have the President of the Commission in Brookhaven.
Don't mention Podols.
That's what the road's gonna get done, too, right?
I've heard so much about Podols. Podols in Brookhaven, it's not a good thing to talk about. It starts Stalin's off again.
Yeah, yeah. I told him there's no opening with Maytag, so...
That's great, he's an agitator, that's...
Reports from elected officials, Carrie?
I just wanted to bring you up to date on the dates that are upcoming on the calendar in regard to the elections, I, last week, I gave Diane a list of testing dates and things like that, so this is April, what, 9th, so it'll be fast approaching here, but your first testing date will be April the 23rd, that's one week, seven days prior to the beginning of early voting, which is April the 30th, and early voting will run for a 10-day period, which will end May the 10th, Saturday, May the 10th, we will be conducting early voting at the Mount near Mall.
Okay.
At the former fit-for-her location, our residents should be familiar with that general vicinity, we were in the former Rex location, right there on that same side of the building, several times, so that'll be a good location for us again. Also, your second testing date will be May the 6th, which is a Tuesday, which is seven days prior to May 13th, which is Election Day, last day to register to vote for this upcoming May election will be April the 22nd, and anyone interested, or if you know military or any overseas voters, or any of our elderly that would be needing an absentee ballot for this election, the last day to apply for an absentee ballot will be May the 7th.
I want to ask a question, hopefully it isn't inappropriate, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, independent and unaffiliated voters have to request a certain ballot when they go in to vote, or else, in other words, the precinct workers can't volunteer any information, so it's incumbent upon the voters to initiate the request, if they want a Democrat ballot or a Republican ballot, they have to make that request to the poll workers.
Correct. If they, if they, if they come in to vote, and they are registered no-party affiliated, or, no-party affiliated, or independent, or anything other than a rec, as a member of a recognized political party in the state of West Virginia, which is Democrat, Republican, or Mountain, then they would be able to request the party ballot of either Democrat, Republican, or Mountain, whichever party that they choose.
So, there will be a separate ballot for the Mountain Party?
I, they don't have any, they do not have one for May.
Oh, okay.
They may have some candidates on, but they did not fill any...
They didn't have any primary, are there, are there any non-party issues on the ballot?
Yeah, yes, sir, you have your Board of Education election, and you have a Conservation District Supervisor election.
Okay.
Which, so if they, if a registered voter who is no-party affiliated approaches to vote, and they do not request either ballot, are, we would just simply present them with a nonpartisan ballot, which would only have two races on it, Board of Education and Conservation District Supervisor.
No.
And what normally happens, when they come to early voting, they'll get to the machine, they'll see that ballot, and they'll say, hey, where's all the other people at? And then they'll have to come back out through the line, and they'll reissue them.
Now, the school board, and this is important information for people to understand, the school board decision will be made in this election.
This is an election, yes, for Board of Education.
Right. How about for Conservation, is that an election? It's also an election?
Yes, because nonpartisan races do not have a primary.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so...
That's logical.
Right, so they, both of those races would be elected on this May ballot, and then they would, their term of office would begin July 1.
That's important for the media to emphasize, they are elections, it's not just a primary, oh, well, I'll decide who I'm gonna vote for in the fall, for the school board and for the Conservation Office, is, there's the elections on May 13th.
There are also elections for your political party executive committees.
Oh, yes, that's true.
Those are on, they come up every four years, and they're on the ballot this year also, and those positions, even though they are partisan, would be elected, because they're just serving for the political party executive committee, so the Democrats and the Republicans both have those races on them.
It's important for people to get out on May 13th, that's what we're trying to emphasize.
Vote however you want, but please vote.
That's right.
Thank you, Carrie. Anything from the Sessors' Office?
Nothing to report.
Anything from Sheriff's Law Enforcement Division Chief?
No, sir, everything's, I was gonna say quiet, everything's good.
Everything from the Tax Department?
Yes, I would like to go back to that letter again, that that gentleman submitted for reprinting, I want to make sure that he asked, what he asked for before we leave today, because I think you voted to reprint tickets, and it's not.
Certificate of sale.
Okay, that's, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, it should be...
That's what I thought I said. Janet, what did I say?
Tax tickets, because I read tax tickets.
Okay. Well, that was just French for certificate.
I just want, certificate.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and fix it, I, with, to amend the previous motion...
Right.
That we issue the certificate of sale that has been lost.
Second. I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good ears, Kelly.
Okay. Diane, anything else?
No.
Bobby?
I have one thing.
Okay, just one more thing, go ahead.
On Monday, we're gonna be starting the roadside, let it clear up, these are the first group of residents that are gonna have to, and...
You're in trouble again, your name's on there.
Yeah.
It's Olive Bridge.
And, clearly with Bobby.
Would you clarify, you're not cleaning that bridge because of its name?
We're not cleaning the bridge, we cleaned two of them.
Two of them.
We were cleaning two, but, cleared them with Bobby and Carlos about getting our roadside supervisor available for Monday, and so that's all in place, the guys are working, and just wanted you to know that's our, our list, and we'll be working, start Monday.
Okay, thank you. Janet, do you have anything? Ben?
Nope.
How about the radio station?
Nope.
TV?
It's quiet as usual.
Any other comment from the public? No comments from the public?
Gary, you have, I didn't mean to pass over you.
You're looking forward to the Justice Center whenever it's complete, I figured that.
Absolutely. Bobby told me they're in, they're in working, so it's a good thing.
The hammers are swinging.
That's a good thing.
Finally, we got, we got started.
Yeah.
Okay.
Move for adjournment?
Well, we can adjourn, we, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Oh, I forgot about that.
At 10:45, so if we can have a motion to go into executive session effective 10:45, we will recess this meeting, and come back together after the executive session.
So, move.
Personnel issue, 69A, for a, second.
I have a motion and a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are in recess until 10:45, and then we'll go into executive session.
Moves to go back into, out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion to go out of executive session, and second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn, and a second, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are adjourned.